Okay. In that case, welcome everybody to tonight's November eighteenth Board of Education meeting for the Coho City School District Board of Ed. And I'd like to call the meeting order at six oh four P M. If we could all stand in for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will turn it over for a roll call, please.
Mrs. Giller?
Here.
Mr. Pascal? Mr. Jackson? Mrs. Dion?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Natalie?
Here.
Mr. Nolan?
Here.
And now I will turn it over to our admin team for tonight's presentations or information to share with us.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So at first with some pictures. So the first picture are elementary schools who are able to have their traditional Thanksgiving lunches this year. Harmony Hill was yesterday, Abram Lansing today, Advance Sky tomorrow. And the first picture are some students at Abram Lansing enjoying their lunch. A huge thank you to Brian Nolan, our food services director and his team for making and delivering more than six hundred hot meals. And then if you get a chance, please check out the video made by Erin Tagwin on her district website. The second picture is a pendulum lab, Mrs. Cupick's advanced science class. And then finally, celebrating Flannel Friday at Harmony Hill. So a few updates before, as always, if you have questions or comments, you can submit them at b o e comment@cohos.org. So a few updates before Stacy starts the presentation. As discussed previously, we sent out a text survey prior to the beginning of the year. And new registrants are asked questions during registration. And then although we received a thousand and forty responses on our text survey, not all families completed it at the time. So we're sending surveys out again beginning tomorrow, just to make sure that all of our information is updated. Elementary is going to go out through Parent Square by principles tomorrow with a return date of Tuesday. And then we're going to send a secondary survey out in the near future as well. The reason we're differentiating is to make sure that parents respond for each child that they have in the district. And then we will work with the schools to make sure anyone who hasn't responded to the survey we see is all and we'll update our database and then we'll continue to do that throughout the rest of the year. So now to the presentation. Just so you know, Stacy and I watched the statewide school finance consortium. And Stacy is going to fill you in that the reassuring thing from watching that is that we are making the right moves, although difficult at this time. And Stacy can talk more about that.
So these are just some talking points from the presentation. State aid is one category that we need to talk about. Foundation aid, there's formula inequities and over fifty percent of school districts remain underfunded. Some of the charts and graphs that were presented, one of the most interesting was the cap region makes the top five list of underfunded on a per student basis. It's obviously composed of those school districts. There are certain items within the formulary which make it inequitable. Combined wealth ratio is about sixty percent. There is a state fund list, which is based off of enrollment. And the shares agreement, which basically guarantees certain percentage by region. So Dr. Timms did touch on Long Island, actually, is the top for underfunded, which is probably surprising to most. And then New York City is the least on a per student basis. Transportation aid, we did receive a memo this month, which brings some questions regarding aidability during the closure period. So actually, we did send an advocacy letter out today. That would be three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for us if they decide that the closure period is not equitable. That's how much we spent on contractual costs. Lucy's and excess cost aid, this is not even talking about this, impacted by twenty percent this fall. You recall last time we talked, there's a pie chart, our impact here comprises two hundred and ninety-four thousand so far. And then Dr. Timms did touch on the pre-credit nineteen twenty reductions. And again, that was part of the pie chart that we had discussed when we combined the pre-credit with our summer handicap and our future ready. And that's a deferred revenue that's on the books right now. We're hoping that we get that money, that's ninety thousand. CARES Act, so the distribution of CARES Act funding remains unsettled. And we did touch on this last time as well. There is a resubmission deadline. It is next week. We are having to recalculate our private school allocation.
So if I could just touch upon that, we did reach out to all of our private schools and then also any special education schools that qualify that have our students. And at this point in time, it looks like only three students are eligible. I think there's a potential of six. So I have the consultations with those schools tomorrow. And then I'm familiar with the submitter, our plan again.
So just sort of the CARES Act is budgeted revenue. That's not even revenue. So that was budgeted. It's about six hundred thousand dollars of exposure there. Dr. Timms talked about federal stimulus and just the uncertainty surrounding any federal stimulus. We wouldn't know what it would look like, if schools would even be part of a federal stimulus, when it would come or how much it would be. And at this point, it's getting really late in the school year, so you shouldn't count on it as part of your planning process, which would be taking action, which we have on. Next slide, please. Tax cap, he talked about an observation that he had and that districts that minimize the tax cap were experiencing an adverse impact on fiscal balance. So what does that mean? So for districts that didn't go to the cap, to try to minimize impacts to the communities during this period, they're seeing some fiscal stress as a result. The current formula, the very first piece of the formula is your prior year tax levy, you know, of that you wanted to be the taxes. So it is a compounding issue, which we do talk about this every single year. So we're just going to want to think about that and talk about that as we move towards the budget planning process for next full year.
So Stacy, you're referring to tax cap during this period that would have been, you know, not only projected for this year, but our previous decisions?
Correct, correct. So for this school year, we did go to the cap. But in years past, sometimes we didn't always go to the cap. So I think we left twenty-five thousand on the table. So that it compounds each year. So it's twenty-five thousand the first year, fifty-one the next, seventy-five as well. So that's just something that we want to talk about. We all want to be aware of as we're planning our revenue budget. He also talked about the cost of COVID nineteen. And really, these are necessarily balanced, sounds right? We're experiencing shortages in staffing, we're having people having quarantine, we're having a hard time finding subs. Not just teacher subs, but cleaners. We don't have school bus drivers, but buses, you know, school bus drivers is a shortage. He said it's critical for us to focus on the mission and keep evaluating and prioritizing our programs. Cash flow, he talked about revenue anticipation not really being a red flag. You know, there's many things to think about. You have to pay that money back. We don't know what we're likely to be receiving for state aid. He said it's basically a red flag for buyer orders and will impact your bond rating. So try to avoid that if possible, which we've been doing for, which is why we're making adjustments now. We try to avoid that situation. And the impact on the economy, he did talk about the last lookback period, it's December thirty first. As we've talked about before, we received most of our state aid in the spring. March is the significant state aid payment. So it's likely that we're going to see a reduction in March, or it's there. So just keep that, you know, in our thoughts. And then he also talked about making sure that we're communicating clearly and keeping, obviously, the Department of Education informed, keeping the community informed as we know more information. So I can talk about what November aid payments we received. So we did receive a general aid payment, three hundred and sixty-three thousand. And B L T, lottery aid payment of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And then we have non-cash aid, which is basically S E B pays T R S directly on our behalf. So they make three equal installments, one in September, one in October, and one in November. So they have that massive debt is paid in full. So I want to talk about cash flow and just keep this in the back of our minds as well. State and federal grants, we've seen nothing. We haven't seen the final payments for nineteen twenty, and we haven't seen startup twenty percent for the current fiscal year. So we are closing that money. And we haven't had any news on smart schools on that as well. So we're loading those funds. So we have to be aware of that. We did reach out to question for state aid planning today to see if they had any insight. And basically, the response was the state is experiencing cash flow issue. They don't have any new news. So nothing new. During the weekly update, we did provide a MyPage document. It's the Reserve and Fund Balance Plan. It's a MyPage document. These next slides are really just a summary of that information. So the intended use of reserves is really prudent management. It is cash resources for us to use for future intended purposes. And we'll go over which, you know, each reserve and what the purpose is. And really, reserves protect us in the budget process where we're able to manage both known and unknown costs in reserves. And then obviously, we would seek to replenish reserves when appropriate. And even more obvious, this is not the time that we need replenishing reserves, right? Unassigned fund balance, the district did plan to appropriate one hundred and sixteen thousand in the current year budget. With all the state aid uncertainties, not sure what that dollar amount will actually be at the end of the year, but we'll carefully monitor that. As of June thirty, we did have around four point six seven percent fund balance, which enables us to carry that quote that we talked about for federal, right, smart schools. Reserve fund strategies this year, this is a little different. I broke it out short term and long term. Usually, we just have more of a strategy with me and we don't say short term or long term, but this is a very unique year. So for the short term, really, we need to focus on preserving our cash position and seek to, whenever possible, maintain our educational programs and capitalize on any savings and efficiencies that we can. And we've been doing all those. Long-term strategies would be to improve our cash position and replenish our reserves, which would improve our bond rating. Those three things are all related, all while maintaining a stable tax levy, right? We have to reconcile the affordability of our communities with the ability to replenish reserves. And continue to capitalize on savings and efficiencies and update our long-range facilities and building plans. Priorities to replenishing reserves would be first retirement. That's our T R S and our A R S reserves. You'll recall at this year's budget, those two reserves will be exhausted by the end of the year. Next would be unemployment based off of recurrent situation. Workers' comp, E V L R, that is the reserve that we use to fund our retirement incentives, capital and debt service. All right. So the workers' compensation reserve is used to fund, we are self-insured, is used to fund our administrative costs. This plan was established in twenty seventeen. The unemployment reserve is used to pay for, to reverse unemployment claims to the New York State Unemployment Insurance Fund. That was established in two thousand and twelve. The capital reserve is used to pay for costs for any purpose in which bonds may be issued. And that was established in twenty eighteen. Debt service reserve is established to fund our debt payments, and it's intended to offset the taxpayer share for future debt payments. That was the only reserve we had on the books prior to twenty ten. Tax surcharge reserve is used to pay for tax surcharge judgments and claims. Our retirement reserve is our E R S reserve that funds our contributions for our support staff. T R S sub fund is contributions for the New York State Retirement System. The E R S was established in twenty fourteen, and we just established the T R S in twenty nineteen. And then the E V L R reserve, this is used to fund for sick time for our staff. And our retirement incentives are all written so that we are able to use this reserve to fund our retirement incentive. And that was established in twenty fifteen. Next slide, please. So this slide shows each reserve with the balance as of June thirty and then the recommended balances. The workers' comp reserve as of June thirty has a balance of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The recommended balance would be two years of expenditures, five hundred and twenty-two thousand. And so that reserve is underfunded. Our unemployment insurance reserve has a balance of forty-two-five. Recommended balance is one percent of our prior year payroll, which is just over two hundred thousand. So that reserve is also underfunded. The capital fund reserve, the balance as of June thirty is nine seventy-one-four. Right now, that would be significantly lower if we made payments. And obviously, the boiler, so it's nearly, it's probably half of that right now. But the recommended balance would be five million over a ten-year term. That's what the voters had approved back in twenty eighteen. The tax surcharge reserve is the only reserve that is fully funded. The balance reflects our estimated exposure for all of our known cases at this time. That reserve is bullish. Debt service reserve, the balance is one point eight million. The recommended balance would be thirteen million. That's what we have in outstanding debt. So that reserve is underfunded. Retirement contribution reserve, the balance is four hundred and twenty-six thousand. We do plan on exhausting that in the current year budget. The recommended balance would be three years of expenses, so one point four million. That is highlighted in red because that resource goes away after this year. T R S fund balance reserve, the balance is just over three hundred thousand. The recommended balance would be just over two million. By law, it can't exceed ten percent of the prior year covered payroll. That also is highlighted in red because that reserve is scheduled to be exhausted at the end of this year. And then finally, our E V L R reserve, the balance is four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The recommended balance would be two point five, which is the equivalent of our compensated absences. So our fund balance is stable at the four point six seven percent. As you can see, most of our reserves are underfunded. So our cash position hasn't materially changed since the last, since last year, when offices state actual were identified as susceptible to fiscal stress. So I would expect us to remain on that list the next time they come out with that report. I think they, I want to say it was December last year, remember, so I would expect us to be right about there every year. Our fund balance improved a little bit, but our reserves are a little bit worse, so. So the next part of the planning process is to talk about the budget timeline the next time we meet. And we'll want to talk about what our goals are as far as revenue and as far as use of any appropriated fund balance or use of reserves. My recommendation would be to not use anything. To try to, to try to preserve our cash as a, to get through this period.
Are we projecting any sort of overage or use for fund balance that we put into our budget this year? Do you think we're going to need that?
I do. I hope we don't need more than that. We'll continue to run and go back very closely throughout the year.
So Stacy, you did mention the Calpellers Office. And I just recall reading an article where he was basically saying, you know, don't cut program, wait, hold off, time is coming. I mean, this was recent. Everyone's take on this is no?
Um.
I mean, if they're in a bad cash position.
Yes, I mean, it's public that they're in a bad cash position, but yeah.
No, I understand. I'm just.
And as Stacy mentioned, we don't know what's going to happen at the federal level. And if something does happen, we don't know how that will impact schools at this point.
I mean, we haven't received.
It's all that money from the last thing, it's over six months ago.
Right, right. So we haven't received any smart school money. That's a million dollars.
And our pre-credit, our title one happened to prove. But as Stacy mentioned, they said it's problematic when you approve, but not releasing the funding.
Yeah. So we haven't seen the nineteen twenty, the final payments that we need on the information in the summer. And we haven't seen that, recording that money. And then we haven't seen the startup fee, startup.
Usually, they did twenty percent.
They did twenty percent.
As a startup.
Yeah. So the proof of the matter is the, the cash flow issue of the state has been passed down to us. So even though we've only seen reductions of Lucy's aid and excess cost aid, we haven't seen our final federal, right, for nineteen twenty. We haven't seen our startup fees. We haven't seen smart schools money. So that's all comparative. I wish I had better news.
Yeah, no. Good news is the sound is better, the quality is better. There is good news. Nineteen twenty, we're talking about the transportation and advocacy, you know, for that funding. And you said that that was contractual cost of like three hundred and forty-four thousand?
Yeah, so it would have been from March sixteenth to June thirty.
Okay. What was, what were those transportation? Was it just us meeting our contract obligations, even though we weren't actually transporting?
Correct, correct. So you recall that we were advised, right, to still pay for our non-essential. So that would be our contractual. Now, there's two, there's two prompts for transportation. We have a contractual obligation, and then we also normally have extra runs that are above and beyond the contractual that occur on a monthly basis. And none of, none of those expenses were incurred or paid for. So it's just the minimal contract and now that is due for those periods. And we were advised to pay them.
And I know that we, as a board, also received the information to advocate for that too. So, you know, we reached out to discussion if that's something that we want to, that the school board to, you know, try and make that come true.
I think it was. So they sent out an electronic form, basically, and I think it went to the Department of Federal Reserve. So this, this report, the Fund Balance and Reserve Report, if there are any changes that you would like to make, any changes that you recommend. And then the next time we meet, it will be listed under the report section for you to approve it.
You make it look like there's more money in there. Yeah, no, we're, I mean.
It was a little modest at the beginning.
Yes.
So it actually ties to the financial statements. There's certain references to the financial statement. So you see that it ties to D sixteen and the financials and the recommendations for compensated absences and our outstanding that there's subschedules that it ties to that information. But I can't change anything.
Listen, believe it or不相信 it, I know I'm going to, you guys couldn't do that, but, you know, those are the ones. I just have a couple of random questions which are not, maybe they are related, but the COVID nineteen costs. So basically, there was a release on school districts having to test if they were in a certain area, a yellow area or whatever. I mean, do we have a plan for this? Have we discussed the implications of that position from the government?
So we began discussion. So if you're in a red or orange zone, then you need to close your schools. But you can reopen them if you tested twenty-five percent of your population. You can reopen them before the fourteenth, please, of closure. And then if you're in the yellow zone, you can remain open as long as you test twenty percent of your overall. The good news with that, originally, they said twenty percent over two weeks. And now they've said twenty percent. And if you're under the overall percentage, then you don't have to continue testing. So our discussions would revolve more around what could we do in a, in a yellow zone situation? in a, in a yellow zone situation? A red zone, that's a tremendous amount of testing that's ongoing. And so I did have a call with Dr. DeTerry this morning. And we spoke about that. We don't have any major testing areas here. Although Whitney Young for Albany County has, and you might have read about Whitney Young in the paper in terms of being a testing site. So we are discussing that and looking at things in terms of what would, what would that look like? And when I have more information, I will definitely share. But it is on our, it is on our radar.
And then I was just wondering if there was an expectation, if we had an expected completion date for the board or whatever.
Minimal, minimal work as well to be completed. There's nothing on the special timeframe. I want to say tick sheets. Thank you. We've had a majority of the work, I'd say, like 90% complete at this point.
Less than 10% is hard to read.
Yeah, so they're just working on those final pieces, but they're, the weather's working.
Any other questions?
Coming through, can, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I, from my end, I'm hearing, it breaks up a little bit. So excuse me if I ask about something that's been already mentioned. So just broadly looking at our financial picture, what we've learned so far is there's funding that we should have received by this time that we have not. And there's some, some aid that has been, September has been what we anticipated. October was what we would anticipate. But we still, we still have not been given definitive information on on what state aid we will be receiving. Is that, is that still the situation that we're in? We just still don't know?
And looking at the state aid that we receive, as Stacy mentioned earlier, we receive a large portion in March. And so and that's, that's a while from now, but we're not sure what's going to happen.
And just, I'm, I'm not saying anything that we don't know, but I just think, I just feel that needs to be said. We've made, we've made cuts based on what we anticipate. And I think it's based on our, our best judgment. But I don't, I just don't, and I know none of us have lost sight, but people have, no longer have jobs. And it's, and it's action that we took on our, on our best guess, our best estimate. I know some of this is unavoidable, but I would sure hope that the state sees it as a, as a priority to give us, give us some answers as people are unemployed, as programs are going met. I don't, I don't know how long we can be kept, we can be up hanging. Did they give an indication on when information will come forward?
No, no indication, Mark, sorry.
Doing your best, thank you.
Next look back period close? The next closes December 31st.
I know that, you know, at the last meeting, we kind of talked about maybe advocating to our, you know, political representatives for certain things, you know, if we're, to be able to, you know, sell some assets or what position that we would be in to be a little bit more flexible in spending money that's allocated for, you know, specifically only to transition to operating costs. I mean, and I don't expect an answer, but I'm just, you know, mentioning that. But, you know, going along with that, I think we, you know, also need to have broader discussions about, you know, what, what does this district look like next year? You know, and I know that we don't know, and I know that we have to plan. And looking back quarterly and as for us to, you know, be making cuts quarterly or, or, you know, trying to make these decisions pieced out, you know, it's very difficult to be able to answer someone on the street. And, you know, what is the health and wellbeing of our district? You know, so I think that we, you know, I don't know how you guys feel, but I think that we need to do some broader, have some broader conversations about what that looks like. And maybe, you know, in more of a workshop setting or something where we're really addressing, you know, structurally, how this district is operating. And without us getting in the weeds, obviously, you know, we don't, we don't need to go there, but.
So Stacy mentioned that the next step is budget discussion and timeline and also process. So what, what best for the circumstances we're in now in terms of that?
It's honestly a possible situation that we're in. Because we don't know what our revenue picture looks like for this year. So asking us to plan for next year's budget when we're not sure where we're going to end up this year is, is really an impossible task. So we need answers, I think, as soon as possible.
I hear the same too, having discussions around certain areas and talking about things that are important and moving forward.
So I mean, like, how can we operate sufficiently while still maintaining our program and just understanding that we're in the business of educating children? And, you know, I know that this is like, what is driving these meetings for a long time? I mean, we went straight from one budget into a crisis. And, and so, not that, you know, obviously, the financials are important, but we also, you know, need to consider and looking back, like, what are our goals? What are our priorities? How can we make those things happen? Actual steps, you know? Hopefully help is coming. So hopefully, after January, we get some help. We won't be at a standstill. Maybe people will work together to help school district. We're at a stalemate here.
Absolutely.
Money has to come from the federal government, go to the state government, to come to the districts. And it's all just sitting there. Nothing's happening. So hopefully, hopefully, better news is coming.
If I, hello?
Yes, hello.
Hi. So I, I, I understand what Margaret's saying makes sense. And we do need to talk about our vision and our goals. However, I think with respect to our, our budget, our timetable for our budget deliberations, it's, I don't, I don't believe we can proceed as we normally would with these huge revenue questions. I think we may have to revisit how, how we do our budget development. And there's, there's pieces that I don't, we're just not in a position to make, to make judgments. There's a lot, we're just, we're not in a position to talk about how programs are going to be funded, what programs continue, programs we need. I don't know how we consider any of that until we have a clear picture of our finances. So I think in some respects, our budget, our budget process is going to need, we're on hold. There's, there's, there's much we can do, but there's some very important decisions we're just not in a position to make until, until we have a better understanding of our, of our financial picture. I think we just may need to re, to relook at how we, how we do our budget. And I don't think it can be, I don't think it can be the same timetable as we've done in the past.
Mark, respectfully, I'm going to do a complete 180 here and say that it means we need to start that much sooner, figure out what truly needs are, and then start to rank what we can put on top of it so we're prepared to react. Because realistically, we don't know if or when we'll get information that we need.
I, I, I agree that discussing priorities would, would make sense. But there's, there's limits to judgments we can make when, when we're blind as to our revenues.
Mark, I don't disagree with you. I do feel like, you know, we were kind of put in, not by anyone, but we were in a position where we had to make decisions that were put off and put off and put off, and then I need an answer tomorrow. I mean, that was, I don't think that was comfortable for anyone to, to, you know, be able to have conversations and open, you know, public meetings and have to give an answer right then and there. I just feel like if we can come at this, you know, at a systematic approach where we're saying, okay, these are the things that are important to us. How do we get there? And how are we functioning right now? That might be able to make it a little bit more efficient so that we can still achieve those goals and not be bankrupt, you know? So I don't, I don't disagree with any.
I think.
Way too many, there's way too many variables for us to have a grasp on of us, any certainties of money or any certainties of our financial position now or in the future. But I think that we still have to talk about.
And I, and I think that there's, there's common ground here. I just don't want to make program decisions, whether it's adding or deleting programs. I don't want to get to that point until we have a better understanding of, of, of our finances. And I think the discussions, discussions of priorities, discussions of our vision and what our values are is all productive. But if it gets to the point of, well, let's take a look at Program X because it might have to go because we can't afford it, it's going to have to be cut. I don't want to be there until, until we have a better understanding of some information from the state. You know, we're, we're feeling all this angst and we're, and we're all doing our best. Our staff is doing the best, our administrator is doing the best. And none of this is anybody's fault. But I just, I just don't want to be cutting programs or adding programs when we have no idea what our revenues are going to be.
I totally agree with everything that you guys are saying. But I think maybe if I'm hearing what you're saying, we and Rick should be able to have a prioritized list almost. So when we do have a clearer financial picture, we'll know, you know, this goes in first, this goes in. And then if we get the revenue support program C, then that goes back into. But at least we'll sort of have had the conversation and have been clear on what the priorities are, aligning our goals.
Right, and I'm not even talking about getting as specific as program more just, okay, what are our priorities? Our priorities are, are, you know, literacy, you know, every kid needs to read. Okay, what can we make sure every kid can read? Like, you know, so I understand that this budget is going to drive the programs behind that. But what are the things that are important to us? And how can we make those things happen even with a budget that is less than desirable?
And I, I, I almost feel like I'm on a different planet that I haven't been able to talk about career education in six months. I'm asking myself, what's wrong with me? I, I just, I just am suggesting that we reexamine how we do our budget. And we're likely to have to make some changes. I am all for, and I think it's healthy, beneficial, and we should talk about our priorities. And what do we want? We're going to have some money, we just don't know how much. But what are, what is our vision? What are our goals? I think those conversations are, are important. And Margaret, I agree, none of us want to be in a position where we have to make decisions quickly without anybody's time to give it the kind of thought we, we want. Again, I'm just suggesting we reexamine our budget process and we may have to move around some, some decisions as to, as to when they're made. But I would certainly concur that the discussion of what is, what is important to us are valuable and we should, we should be having those.
So Stacy and I have been having some of those discussions about looking at the process and even back at the building level in terms of how we get feedback from staff, our meetings, our meetings with staff and the discussions not as focused on, so what do, you know, what do we need to increase or add on? But how can, what are, how can we do this? How can we achieve these results? So I think we're saying the same thing. And it's a different, it's definitely a different budget here.
Yeah, and the process definitely needs to change. Because normally, we start off with, we'll send a template out to the buildings and we have historical costs. The president and I were talking about this, the historical costs are flawed right out of the gate because we don't have the last quarter for, for last year. And then this year, we have all sorts of expenses that are not normal, right? And if we, if we went, if we trended sub-cost, I mean, we would be so significantly under pressure the following year because there's a shortage. So we just can't do things the way that we've always done them. And we really need to be thoughtful and make sure that the buildings have a say, that it needs to be a much different process. And it has been.
So one of the things that I think, you know, unexpectedly came out of this as a positive is that teachers are appreciating the smaller class sizes and are able to, you know, give accommodations to a special ed student even if they're not a special education teacher. You know, but I think that, you know, the size of their classrooms right now has kind of taken us back years to where we used to have, you know, be able to manage a class size of 15 and be able to do that. And, you know, this situation has put us in a, in a place where we have to do it. And I think kids are benefiting from it, and I think teachers are benefiting from it too. So, you know, during your conversations, things like that, you know, that, that helps to know that, okay, you know, what does that look like in Abraham Lansing? Would that look like in Harmony Hill? You know, at Vansky, how do we keep that, maintain integrity of, of that value of a small class size? Just an example, just a thought.
Well, I think that's a really important point is, obviously, things look different this year. I think it's important to get that feedback for as many people as possible. What's going better than usual? Obviously, what additional struggles are we seeing? But we can take that information to help us move forward with certain decisions.
I think we're on the same page.
So all of it in our, we talk, like, the virtual model. I mean, we are hearing every single day more and more districts are having to go virtual. And I'm not saying that it's an eventuality, but it seems like it is. And I know that the last conversations that we had here a couple of weeks ago, you know, we still have a ways to go to make that happen. And I'm just wondering if you have any progress on these.
Yep, so, and there's, there's different levels of virtual, correct? There's like if a classroom has to quarantine with another students, have to quarantine if you have to go virtual for 14 days, or if you have to go virtual for longer. So at the secondary level, the discussion is if it's a shorter term, so a 14-day, we continue the loop world, period by period, check-in with students and teachers at the middle and high school level who are actually going to be with teacher leaders and principals tomorrow. And part of that discussion, they don't have the agenda yet, but part of that discussion is, okay, so that would be a short term because then we know we would go back to that same, same schedule upon return. What if it was long term? And some of the feedback is that if it would be, it would potentially be doable to have students meeting more frequently. it would potentially be doable to have students meeting more frequently virtually than the loop long day. We'd have to look at what that means with some classes that are every other day, or in a free virtual model, and what that means in terms of class size. So those discussions have started in terms of what would it look like short-term, and then very soon what it would look like long-term. The harder, and we have more devices at our secondary level. The harder discussions are what will it look like at the elementary, and that has a lot to do with devices. So that's why we're making sure that we have the data updated, and that's why that's going now, just to, for two reasons. We decided to, we want to do this periodically throughout the year as our new way of going forward. We did it at the beginning of the year, so then let's do it again here, and let's do it again. And then that way, we can keep the databases updated versus having to gather and work through these huge pieces of information. Our next step for that, too, is then when we know, and we're asking more specific questions in terms of devices per child versus devices per family, because that impacts our model, is also to then again, saying, if this happens, then we know that these are the devices that go to these students and for those databases. So the discussion with elementary, definitely more robust than last year as to the English Language Arts, it has to be math and science or social studies, depending on where teachers are in the cycle, social, emotional, second step, and transition to virtual, or virtual teachers are doing second step, social, emotional. But then what does that look like in terms of offering set schedules consistent among grade levels, set times, so that there's a set amount of times? The question is, how much time can we have our elementary students spend on devices? And that depends on our number of devices. And the answer might be different now versus the end of December, when our books are planned to come in. So that is the discussion, and then starting those discussions, and we need to continue and then have conversations with the local community.
Do you have current feedback on how things are going with the virtual classes versus in-person for the elementary levels, as far as attendance, pacing, and results?
I have anecdotal feedback, and remember, we're coming into our first report third period, and parent conferences are the third and the eighth, so then we'll have actual American level data. It takes longer virtually to cover material, so the pacing is not the same. Some of the students, even if you put students into breakout rooms, et cetera, they don't have the same level of social interaction with each other. And especially with the smaller kids, it takes much more time to unmute, to say something, to call on-
I don't think you have adults who have a third.
To call on kids. So we know that the pacing is slower. And then we have some students who are doing that well, and then we have some students who are really struggling and falling behind in some cases. It's tech issues, Zoom, et cetera, and then in other cases, it might not be the technology. I had a virtual meeting with teachers in grade 25 today, K2, the last time, so we'll gather the actual data.
Infrastructure side on the school side, you're doing well, though?
So if teachers are presenting from desktops and laptops, that works well.
So basically, it's just doing better on the wired connection, if we're having struggles with wires?
Chromebooks. Chromebooks, it's more difficult with Zoom. But also, I'm hearing some districts are having issues with Google Meet. But if a teacher is presenting, and we worked through with our virtual teachers on desktop and laptop, it's been much better. So we understand this presents a challenge, too, right?
Okay.
So we've got to, what Margaret was saying about if you end up going fully virtual. We already have experience of that on a small scale. We had, I think, the UPK class. And had to, the entire pod had to go virtual, and now we've got a-
So we have some classes that have to go virtual.
Right. So what have we seen, and what do we think we've learned from those two small-scale incidents? And from the teachers that we could bring if it wasn't entirely just a wire?
So one is current, and the UPK, that did not have to go virtual.
Okay. So what do we need to do to cover that?
We learned that we needed about six devices to go home, and we were able to get them home that next day, along with material delivery. And so students are signing on with the teachers, and upon the return, we'll get feedback from the teachers.
So thoughts, you know, having some sort of a written policy, where, like, this is the expectation when you go virtual? You can log in, and, you know, not at a particular time, but some sort of a consistent-
So after our last meeting, I did reach out, and there are some existing templates that can be modified. And just like last time, we did have, when it happened in March, we did have a written framework, although not specific enough, pretty much.
And is that something that you think you would kind of deploy at, you know, okay, well, this is the time that this class is going virtual, so they need to get expectations? Or is it something that you would think you would need to, as soon as you have it established, send it out so everybody knows?
And we're in the process, yeah. And we need to get some feedback. Just tomorrow, with the meeting at the secondary level, and we don't have teacher leaders at the elementary, in terms of specific title for the level we're shooting.
So you're thinking to send it out to everybody, just as soon as you're willing to-
Well, I'm thinking to give feedback from the principals, feedback from the LTs. And then, yes, so then this is, so this is the framework if a pod has to quarantine. This is the framework if everybody has to go virtual. So it's, and it's different, because if a pod has to quarantine, not necessarily, the special area and other supports are not necessarily. And so schedules might look different because of AIS and special ed versus if a whole group has to go virtual. But those are things to take into consideration, too.
So if we were approached by someone to say, hey, can I donate a laptop or computer to a band? I don't know if that laptop or computer works, but, you know, I have been approached and asked, you know, can I donate? And, you know, it's not something where I would want to put work on anyone's plate to say, hey, does this work? But, I mean, it is a thought if we were to be able to have a drop-off area, just kind of like a community closet, if somebody wants to donate tech that, you know, we prioritize. I don't know how that works or how that looks, or if we even want to get involved with it, you know?
So I think we want to talk with Sophie, our IT director, and and come up with parameters, what works, what doesn't, what's the age, what's the operating system? And then also, you know, if our, hopefully, right, 300-plus Chromebooks come in in the next, you know, period of time, then that's gonna be, you know, the priority to get them deployed. But it's definitely something that, if it's something that would work for us, we wouldn't want to turn away.
Right. I mean, my thoughts are like, okay, well, who handles, like, who accepts that? Who handles it? Do we have to make sure that the computer is wiped clean and that there's nothing on there? I mean, I feel like there's a lot of variables involved, but I did feel like I needed to worry about.
Yeah, so that's something we definitely have to look into. I think we mentioned that we had we had reached out to businesses to see if they would be, you know, willing to donate that little uniform. We weren't that successful at the time, although we've got some monitors.
Yeah, they had monitors, yeah.
But that's definitely something we can talk with Sophie about with some parameters.
Actually, the Albany Census was donated, a pack of masks, some Alacant sanitizer, and some paper today, to see that, and a part of the agenda to accept. Dinner comes in at the physical plant, so they promised us that we could make some masks if they put it back in.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I know that travel shoot would be more difficult with a number of different factors. So that's something we can talk to Sophie about.
But I mean, if parents are having to use their own home devices anyway, I mean, there's some level where it's not on the whim to, I don't know. It's just, if somebody has nothing, something is better than nothing.
So right now, with any of our virtual learners, which are just a few virtual, they have a device, they have a device. And I think I mentioned, we did receive hotspot students with any virtual client. We reached out to the state and asked if they're not all being used by homeless families at this point in time, if there are families that are struggling that need them. And so at this point in time, we have been able to connect some other families with hotspots, so that's good. I think anything that we can do to get devices in our families' hands will help. If there's any way we can speed up that.
I think, Margaret, what you were talking about, to me, doesn't seem like a district initiative. If people, you know, in the community or through the PTOs or some other organization, you know, like, the district could provide a, you know, or try to facilitate getting a list of families that are in need of devices, but this would be like donating the device to that family, not to the district, I think. Because these aren't things we would add to our network of devices that we would then get to families. They would just go directly to the families as things that they could use. Because I think that's how it would work.
That's why I kind of referred to it as like a community closet, where, you know, like, somebody donating a coat, you know, or a jacket to a child who needs a jacket. I mean, it's a computer, but-
Right.
I don't know.
There's like other groups that do that, right? Like, we have the Holiday Hope program, for instance, and that's like its own entity, if I recall correctly.
And that's our, that's, I mean, the social workers help with that, but that's, you know, that's separate for our families. I think parameters would be good, because through experience, we know things that don't work well virtually. So we could say these are the types of devices that work well.
We could get cooperation, we could get help with it. As Matt mentioned, there's organizations that do this. For example, the Youth Connect Center, they're preparing to offer a lot of services, and they might be in a position to work with us on some kind of a distribution, where, as Matt said, the equipment doesn't come to the school, it goes, we work it out so it can go more directly to the families through a church organization or something that operates that way.
All in all, volunteers, right?
In some respects, the structure's there, we just need to use it. And things are simpler if it doesn't have to go through the bureaucracy of a school district.
Agreed.
Were there other questions, comments on the agenda? I know that I had a couple comments related to it. One was from Erin Hill, which was just about the budget, and she wanted to thank the board and Stacy and Peggy for our stewardship and this difficult, kind of awful, time that we're in. So thank you, Erin, that's appreciated, and app description, it is a not fun time at all. And then a comment from an individual just talking about how we should keep in mind when, that although class sizes are small, and that's great, but for virtual classes, those sizes are increasing, and that the virtual teachers, in their opinion, are overloaded, and that it's a lot for them at the moment. So that's just another factor for us to consider when we talk about class sizes, about in-person versus digital, and that they can be very different.
Do you have any information in that, the current swaps? Is there something you can send out?
Something that I can send out, the virtual classes at the elementary range from 13 to 25, with the majority being around 18. And then I have it broken down by grade level as well. You never know, and somebody might ask.
So it sounds like the virtual class sizes will actually be coming down a little bit, depending on the order too?
They're about stable. They're about stable. One grade has gone up by two.
Another comment that we received that was related to the discussion we were just having about computers and technology was from Don Drew, which was kind of piggybacking off of Margaret's idea, asking if anyone had reached out to state offices for computers. And they said that there's a surplus usually, although they weren't sure about who to talk to about that specifically. But that might be something we can look into if we haven't already.
Thank you.
And then a comment from Bill Smith was about, he was agreeing with Mark on how difficult it is to make a budget for the future, when we're still dealing with today's budget, and that we're kind of at the mercy of the state, and our hands are tied, in his opinion. So we'd agree. Okay. If there are not any other comments related to anything on the agenda, then I could use a motion that the board adopts tonight, consent agenda.
Mrs. Gill? Yes. You're past now?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yeah.
Mrs. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Annalee?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Are there any comments from board members or anyone on any topic unrelated to the agenda?
Oh, I have one, I'm sorry. The Fire Department Union was talking about maybe being able to donate some pop-up tents for the entryways, the way it gets a bit worse. But we were worried that maybe they would be a liability issue, we would donate it, and then it's actually killed by ants, or something. So if we were to donate them, would they be able to be used? Is there a different type of donation that you guys, that you would prefer? That's an extreme example, obviously.
So it depends on what type of tent. We did hear about this in the began discussions with Jim Stapleton. So if they are the open-ended pop-up types of tents, then those aren't considered big structures. So it depends what type of tent, the best way is for us to work with Jim Stapleton, our director of facilities, and go through those parameters.
Okay, I will find you into that.
I can help with that. So I just thought I'd-
So I just had a, two quick things. I was wondering, I know that there was an athletic working meeting about winter sports, and we can talk a little bit about that. And I was wondering where we were at as far as, are, are, you know, are we ready to, it could just be bowling, and?
We need to circle back with Jeff and maybe him again. But I think, I think they said December 30th as the start date for the lower west wing cheer, you're correct, it's bowling, um, for the, this December. I can double, I can double check. There's been some difference in the dates for practices. And just recently, there was just an updated previous track. So I'll double check that. But our plan is to move it with Jeff again. And then also, so, and then there hasn't, we haven't heard yet about the high risk from, from the building.
But we all said if, if, I mean, we're not meeting again for another couple of weeks.
So we have, we can appoint unpaid coaches at a board meeting for practices. Because I believe the practices, unofficial practices, aren't able to start until after that meeting. And I'll clarify, like, that's what my last, um, one I read. And there's, you know, the off-season type of, which that's, that's, that's a little bit different. So, but I'll provide you an update after we talk to Jeff.
Perfect. And then my last question was if we've had any meetings with the, you know, if there wasn't any update from any of the meetings? Or if we are not prepared to talk about it?
Well, so actually, we are going to enter into executive session to talk about, to gain notifications whenever we go into executive session.
Again, I think.
So for the sports, and this was the indoor track and bowling.
Indoor track.
Yeah. And then the high risk, or, or, that's crush the ball, and this, yeah, that's what it's.
I had another comment that I wanted to get to, which was about the, the Holiday Hope Program. It was that the American Legion, for actually the last 10 years, has donated a little, about $1,000 to the Holiday Hope Program. And they weren't sure, with everything going on, whether that would happen again this year or not. And, but it, it was able to happen. And they wanted to thank the American Legion for their donation again this year. And just that it'll be, you know, very meaningful, especially this year. And to continue to kind of thank them for their continued contributions over the years. So, thank you. Aside from that, the only other real thing I wanted to touch on was getting back to the budget, our plans. At the moment, I know we have talked about, you know, the 10% reductions, which we have aimed for and currently have made reductions to hit the, what would be a 10% reduction in our state aid for the year. And the number floated from the state was 20%, hypothetically, way back when. And we've been aiming for 10%, but at this point, barring any new information, we are not going to make any changes to staffing or any other, you know, changes moving forward until we get new information. Is that accurate?
Correct. Yes.
Because I know we were hoping to hear some new additional information at the end of November, and that would potentially influence whether we needed to make more reductions. But we're not going to move in that direction unless we get new information.
To clarify, so we only came up with about 80, 85% so far?
Yeah, we're short, um, we're short our, our, our goal, yeah. But we're having discussions, so we're still hopeful.
Any other comments, questions on anything at all?
Like to say happy Thanksgiving to them.
You and your nine closest friends.
Again, huge thank you to Brian Nolan and the food service team. I think that it was, it's excellent job putting out those Thanksgiving meals. Just seeing the videos on, on Facebook and, and, you know, I know that a hot meal is appreciated and, and that must have been, that's kind of work. So huge kudos to Brian and the team, so thank you.
I want the same thing. I mean, that really just is a small picture of what everyone here, every staff member, every administrator, you guys, the parents, the families have done. I mean, we had minimal disruptions. And it's because everyone's been vigilant and worked really hard to want to be there. You don't, nobody wants to lose. So thank you to everybody involved for doing everything to kind of keep our kids safe and our buildings functioning.
I can only speak for Armie Hill, but because I pick up the airbrush. It's just, it, it's like clockwork. It's run since day one. It's so smooth. There, it, it's just so organized. And I can only speak for Armie Hill because that's the only school I go to the fight. And every parent seems very satisfied with the way things are going. Considering all these kids are emptying out. It's just very structured and organized. The kids are happy and congratulations, I'm the first marking crew for that. I mean, we did kind of make the first marking, great team. I don't, I don't know, we might want to address Ama Lindsay, but I'm just, I don't know. I'm speaking for Armie Hill, I just think it's very cool. I mean, outside looking in.
If there's no other comments or questions, I could use a motion to enter into executive session at 7:21 to discuss collective bargaining.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Gill?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deion?
Yes.
Mrs. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Annaly?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. And I'll see the rest of the board in a moment. But for everyone at home, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.